All right, chairman, we are recording now.
All right, so our recording's on, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Planning Commission, January 6th at 6:30.
Those at home viewing the pledge, will you please mute your microphones because the delay really throws it all off?
We will all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and we'll go over to Angela for our roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Wood.
Present.
Commissioner Melter.
I'm here.
Commissioner Walthius.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Journey.
Present.
And Commissioner Lowman. All are here.
All right, so this time, this is the portion for public comment, if there's anything that's not on our agenda that anybody would like to bring up, this would be the time to do it. We do not have anyone in the room wanting to add to that. Do we online?
We don't have anybody else doing it online.
All right, so we'll move on for the discussion and approval of the meeting minutes from our last Planning Commission on December 16th. Anybody have any comments or changes or alterations?
I would move to approve the December 16th meeting minutes as presented.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we'll go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Lowman. Commissioner Journey.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Parker.
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius.
Yes.
Commissioner Melter.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Right, seven I's, no N's.
All right, well, we're just cranking things out in 2022. All right, so we'll just, we have nothing on our public hearings, nothing's changed since the binder was printed. So we'll slide over for a staff update.
Um, I don't really have any updates. We might have a couple of applications coming in for property line adjustments, but there's some things with different zones, so we're working those out. Other than that, I have been working on all of the edits that you guys have suggested for the code update. There was just some consistency errors and some different things, so I've gone through it probably about four times now, just correcting different things and whatnot, so we're getting to the point where, you know, after we're done today, we'll start doing the final edits in there, we'll look up some of the stuff that you guys wanted just to discuss, and then eventually we'll bring it back to you, so.
So you guys have already been doing all the checking with other cities and counties as far as?
Well, we've done a lot of the edits and stuff, we haven't, there's some of the discussion points that you guys put that we'll need to get together and kind of discuss those, but we've done a lot of the, the basic editing, some of the miscellaneous stuff that we've wanted.
And all that.
I would like to have done more of that, but we just.
That's a big thing to bite off all at one time.
Hasn't risen to the top of the pile yet.
I don't think it's bad, it's okay. Yeah.
I don't really have much to add to that. We are, we've got a couple of planning projects going on with an update to our transportation system plan and a housing needs analysis. But there was a hiccup with the transportation system plan, and they had to start the procurement process over again because they neglected, ODOT neglected to review one of the applica, of the proposals, so they reviewed two but not the third, and that was frustrating, so we're back, we're back on track now, and hopefully that'll get going. And then the housing needs analysis should kick off in the next month or so, too.
Is the housing needs one, is that one that's done with, or in conjunction with the school district, or is that strictly from a city side?
They, they should be, housing needs analysis typically looks mainly at the need rather than the effect. School, the, the school district is more of, you know, has, they're impacted by housing, but not, usually not considered to be impacted by the lack of housing, that's not necessarily true, but. And so I'm not sure how much they'll be involved, but like everything like this, we invite stakeholders to be involved throughout the process, and no doubt there will be at least some, some notifications given out to the school district, and they'd be welcome to participate as much as they care to.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff? Well, should we pop into robo-reader already?
Oh yeah, we, this is our last, hopefully, we should be able to get the last of this done for this round.
Yeah, we're ready.
Eva's got YouTube on the split screen, or?
All right, let me share the screen here. All right.
Type I application and review procedures. 17.122.010 procedure for type I action. A decision authority. Applications subject to a type I review shall be reviewed and decided by the city manager or his/her designee. B application and completeness. The application and completeness review process shall comply with provisions in section 17.120.040. C decision. The city manager or designee shall review the application and shall make a decision based on an evaluation of the proposal and on applicable clear and objective standards as set forth in this development code. D notice and appeals. Notice of the decision is provided only to the applicant. E appeals. All type I land use decisions may be appealed to the Planning Commission. The appeal shall be submitted within 12 days of the date the decision is mailed on forms provided by the city. F commission hearing and notice of appeal. If a type I decision is appealed, city staff shall schedule a hearing before the Planning Commission. The commission shall conduct the hearing consistent with procedures set forth in chapter 17.130. Written notice of a public hearing on the appeal shall be mailed to the applicant and those who received notice of the original decision. This notice shall be mailed at least 10 days prior to the public hearing on the appeal and shall contain the information required in chapter 17.130. G commission action. The commission action on a type I appeal shall be in the form of a decision. Within seven days of the commission decision, the applicant and all individuals who participated in the public hearing or requested notice of the decision shall be mailed written notice of the decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the decision to approve or deny the request and any conditions of approval. H appeals. All appeals of type I land use decisions of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the city council. The appeal shall be submitted within 12 days of the date the decision is mailed. I council hearing and notice of appeal. If the commission decision on a type I decision is appealed, city staff shall schedule a hearing before the city council. The council shall conduct the hearing consistent with procedures set forth in chapter 17.132. Written notice of a public hearing on the appeal shall be mailed to the applicant and those who received notice of the commission decision on appeal. This notice shall be mailed at least 10 days prior to the public hearing on the appeal and shall contain the information required in section 17.126.01. J notice of council decision. Within seven days of the final city council decision, the applicant and those who attended the hearing or requested notice shall be mailed written notice of the council decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the approval or denial of the request and any applicable conditions of approval. K appeal of council decision. All appeals heard by the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. The appeal shall be submitted within 21 days of the date the decision is mailed. Appeals shall comply with LUBA procedures.
So this is one of the improvements in this version of the code that we don't have right now. Right now, all of the actions, all the things you can apply for are, they're spelled out all in their own. If you want to do a partition, it's spelled out under partition, et cetera. In this code, it basically takes all of those actions, all the things you can apply for, and it categorizes them in type 1, 2, 3, and 4. And the type 1 procedures are all administrative, essentially, staff can make the decision. The type 2 and beyond are what is, is more planning, and then type 4 is basically stuff that goes through the count. It changes the, the code and things like that, so. This, this is actually something I've been looking forward to a lot, because it'll actually simplify things a lot and make things a lot more clear on what the requirements are.
Can you just give us an example of a type 1?
Yeah, like a property line adjustment is a type 1 procedure. That's just a, you know, if you're, if, if you need to, you and your neighbor decide to move your property line to where the fence line actually is, that would be a type 1 procedure. We don't want people to have to go through a big hassle to, to do something like that, and currently, right now, you don't, but the point is, it's, it's not categorized in, in, in this way, and it makes it harder to, to administer. This kind of simplifies things by lumping those kinds of decisions all together. Does that make sense?
So I have a question about the text.
Yeah.
On D and F, notice of the decision is provided only to the applicant, but that's not what it says in F or in I. It says everybody will get a written notice.
So I is an appeal. Right.
Well.
So notice of the decision, in this case, if, if, if you are doing a, say you're doing a property line adjustment, once the decision is made approving your property line adjustment, we don't send notice out to anybody else besides the applicant.
Okay.
I see what you're saying, D does say notice and appeal, but just to say probably notice and then appeals.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think appeals, I think, I think it's just notice of the decision, that's appropriate to the applicant, but then appeals, maybe appeal to the planning commission, so if it goes to the planning commission, then it's more acceptable to get the notice.
We need to have the microphones turned on.
I'm not able to hear who I'm speaking to.
I'm sorry, I didn't have it turned on. Yeah, so I think D should just say notice and not notice and appeals, because in a type 1, the notice only needs to go to the applicant, however, if it does get appealed to the Planning Commission, then the notice goes out further than that, so I think that, Eva, you're correct, we should take out appeals because it makes it confusing, and that's not how it should be, so it should just say, D is notice, notice of decision is provided, or just.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this section?
With, with the type 1 application, that's still, they send, still send out notification to all the people within a certain radius of the property.
Correct, right now, it's 100 feet.
Even though it would still be?
Well, the new one.
On this particular one note.
Currently, property line adjustments and partitions, it's 100 feet around. The new one, there's some that I think this one changes it, and I don't know by heart. You think I've looked through this? And I think that's in the actual application, I think that's in the application portions themselves.
Do you look under?
Under new charge, land divisions, let's see, I-56.
I just don't know how anybody would, would choose to come in and be able to appeal it if they didn't know what was going on.
Let me see here. National standards.
Yeah, I don't think there is any notice.
It is somewhere, because I read it and I wrote notes. As many times as I went through this, you know, you think I would have it memorized by now, but I don't. I know it's in one of these. 20 days, 120 days.
Because it seems like even if it was administrative, that you would still send out the notifications, if nobody says anything, then it's done. And approved.
But this is looking like it's removing that notification.
No, I know it's somewhere, because it says 200, and we either have 1 or 300, and I made notes of that, that ours says 100 or 300, and theirs in here says 200 somewhere.
Well, 100 would pretty much cover all the abutting neighbors.
I'll have to, I'll have to remember where it is, and, because it is in one of these.
Doesn't ORS dictate that?
Yes, there is some chapters in ORS, but we can do it as, if ours is stricter, it can go, and I don't, I'll have to look it up.
Okay.
It's in, it's in here somewhere, I just can't remember where it was. I'll have to find my notes.
Let's leave a note to check on that, then.
Okay. Because I do have it circled. And I do have it in the, the ones I edited, also, I made a note of it. I have so many notes written down. Okay, I'll find that out.
Thank you.
Okay, any other issues there that we can look at? Carry on, and we will move on.
17.124 type 2 applications and review procedures. 17.124.010 procedure for type 2 action. A decision authority. Applications subject to a type 2 procedure shall be reviewed and decided by the city manager or his/her designee. B application and completeness. The application and completeness review process shall comply with provisions in section 17.120.040. C hearing option. The city manager or designee may request a public hearing before the Planning Commission. A public hearing may also be requested by the applicant. The procedures for conducting the public hearing shall comply with the standards in chapter 17.130. D notice. Before making a type 2 decision, the city shall mail notice of the application to: 1. All owners of record of real property within 100 feet of the subject site. 2. Any person who submits a written request to receive a notice. 3. Any governmental agency that is entitled to notice under an intergovernmental agreement entered into with the city or required by state statute. 4. The road authority and rail authority and owner, when there is a proposed development abutting or affecting their transportation facility and allow the agency to review, comment on, and suggest conditions of decision for the application. 5. The city may notify other affected agencies, as appropriate, for review of the application. Either notice of a pending type 2 decision in item A above shall include the following: Provide a 14-day period for submitting written comments before a decision is made on the land use application. Identify the specific land use decisions or decisions requested. Describe the street address or other easily understandable reference to the location of the site. List the relevant decision criteria by name and number of development code sections. State the place, date, and time the comments are due, and the person to whom the comments should be addressed. Include the name and telephone number of a contact person regarding the administrative decision. State that if any person fails to address the relevant decision criteria with enough detail, they may not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals or Circuit Court on that issue. Only comments on the relevant decision criteria are considered relevant evidence. State that all evidence relied upon by the city to make this decision is in the public record, available for public review. Copies of this evidence can be obtained at a reasonable cost from the city. Application. State that after the comment period closes, the city shall issue a decision. The decision shall be mailed to the applicant and to any person or agency who submitted written comments or who is otherwise legally entitled to notice. F decision. The city manager or designee shall review the application and shall make a decision based on an evaluation of the proposal and on applicable CRIT area as set forth in this development code. G notice of decision. Within five working days after a decision is made, a notice of decision shall be sent by mail to: the applicant and all owners or contract purchasers of record of the site that is the subject of the application. Any person or agency who submits a written request to receive notice or provides comments during the application review period. Any governmental agency that is entitled to notice under an intergovernmental agreement entered into with the city and other agencies that were notified or provided comments during the application review period. H appeals and reconsideration. All type 2 land use decisions may be appealed to the Planning Commission. The appeal shall be submitted within 12 days of the date the decision is mailed. I commission hearing and notice of appeal. If a type 2 decision is appealed, city staff shall schedule a hearing before the Planning Commission. The commission shall conduct the hearing consistent with procedures set forth in chapter 17.130. Written notice of a public hearing on the appeal shall be mailed to the applicant and those who received notice of the original decision. This notice shall be mailed at least 10 days prior to the public hearing on the appeal and shall contain the information required in section 17.126.01. J commission action. The commission action on a type 2 appeal shall be in the form of a decision. Within seven days of the commission decision, the applicant and all individuals who participated in the public hearing or requested notice of the decision shall be mailed written notice of the decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the decision to approve or deny the request and any conditions of approval. K appeals. All appeals of type 2 land use decisions of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the city council. The appeal shall be submitted within 12 days of the date the decision is mailed on forms provided by the city. L council hearing and notice of appeal. If the commission decision on a type 2 decision is appealed, city staff shall schedule a hearing before the city council. The council shall conduct the hearing consistent with procedures set forth in chapter 17.132. Written notice of a public hearing on the appeal shall be mailed to the applicant and those who received notice of the commission decision on appeal. This notice shall be mailed at least 10 days prior to the public hearing on the appeal and shall contain the information required in section 17.126.01. M notice of council decision. Within seven days of the final city council decision, the applicant and those who attended the hearing or requested notice shall be mailed written notice of the council decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the approval or denial of the request and any applicable conditions of approval. An appeal of council decision. All appeals heard by the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. The appeal shall be submitted within 21 days of the date the decision is mailed. Appeals shall comply with LUBA procedures. 17.124.020 conditions of approval. A authorization for conditions. Approvals of a type 2 action may be granted subject to conditions. Conditions shall be designed to protect public health, safety, and general welfare from potential adverse impacts caused by a proposed land use described in an application. Conditions shall either ensure compliance with the standards of the development code or fulfill the need for public service demands created by the proposed use. B timing of conditions. Whenever practical, all conditions of approval required by the city shall be completed prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. When an applicant demonstrates that it is not practical to fulfill all conditions prior to issuance of such permit, the city may require a performance bond or other guarantee to ensure compliance with zoning regulations or fulfillment of required conditions. Bonding shall comply with adopted city regulations and procedures. C modify conditions. A request to change or alter conditions of approval shall be processed as a new type 2 action. 17.126 type 3 applications and review procedures.
Sorry. Any questions on that one?
That one seems pretty close to what we have.
Yeah, so it looks like the difference is, right now, property line adjustments and partitions get the 100-foot buffer, it looks like, and the new one, type 1 doesn't need noticing except for the, and then type 2 moves on to the 100-foot, so that's the difference. That's why I couldn't find it.
There's a table on, on 17.90.030. There's a table showing which ones are type 1, which ones are type 2. The type 1 are property line adjustment, home occupation, and interpretations. And so for any of those, there would be no notice except to the applicant. For type 2, that's a partition, adjustment, those things, there would be those who are within 100 feet.
But on a property line adjustment, type 1, all parties would be notified?
Well, yeah, all, all that are signed onto the application, yeah.
But people, people say it was a, an Easterly line adjustment, people on the west side of the property aren't going to be notified, it'll just be the neighbor.
Just whoever's involved.
Whatever other property may be affected by it.
Right, if, if it doesn't, if it doesn't actually change your property line or require, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be notified of it.
Okay.
A G notice of decision must be mailed out within five working days, and on M, notice of council decision has seven days. You want some consistency there? I mean, it's essentially the same thing unless we have a holiday during the week.
Hold on, I'm trying to find.
Oh, here it is, so 5, 7. I'll have to look, because I don't know what the, I don't know what the rules for planning, or for the city council are.
Okay. Is ours for mailing out Planning Commission, is it five working days or seven days, calendar days?
It's usually five, because it's, when we used to have it on, the planning commissions on the Monday, I would have to have stuff done by that Friday.
Yeah.
So. I'll have to look and see what the actual rule is, but that was what my graph says.
It looks like, yeah, the, the five days is after a staff decision. And then the commission action for the appeal, it's within seven days, and then the council decision was within seven days. I'm not sure why there's a difference there, it could be just to give extra time for the minutes of a meeting to get taken care of, but that's the only thing I can think of is why they, why they would be different. But we can check into that. Anything else? All right, moving on to type 3.
17.126.01 procedures for type 3 actions. A decision authority. Applications subject to a type 3 procedure shall be reviewed and decided by the Planning Commission. B application and completeness. The application and completeness review process shall comply with provisions in section 17.120.040. C agency referrals. Referrals will be sent to interested agencies such as city departments, police, and fire departments, the school district, utility companies, and applicable state agencies. If a county road or state highway is impacted, referrals should be sent to the applicable county public works department and slash or Oregon Department of Transportation. D commission hearing and notification area. City staff shall schedule a hearing before the Planning Commission. Written notice of the public hearing shall be mailed at least 20, 20 days prior to the hearing date to the applicant, owners of property within 200 feet of the boundaries of the subject property and to affected county and state agencies, including highways and roads. The commission shall conduct the hearing consistent with procedures set forth in chapter 17.130. The notice of a pending type 3 hearing shall include the following: 1. Explain the nature of the application. 2. Cite the applicable criteria from the development code. 3. Identify the location of the property. 4. State the date, time, and location of the Planning Commission hearing. 5. Include the name of the city representative to contact and the telephone number where additional information- where additional information may be obtained. Six, state that failure of an issue to be raised in a hearing, in person, or by letter, or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the decision-maker an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Seven, state that a copy of the application, all documents, and evidence relied upon by the applicant and application criteria are available for inspection at no cost and a copy will be available at reasonable cost. Eight, state that a copy of the staff report will be available for inspection at no cost at least seven days prior to the hearing and a copy will be provided at reasonable cost. Nine, include a general explanation of the requirements for submission of testimony and the procedure for conduct of hearing. E. Commission action. The commission action on a type-three request shall be in the form of a decision. Decisions are to be signed by the planning commission chair or acting planning commission chair. Within seven days of the commission decision, the applicant and all individuals who participated in the public hearing or requested notice of the decision, shall be mailed written notice of the decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the decision to approve or deny the request and any conditions of approval. F. Appeals. All appeals of type-three land use decisions of the planning commission may be appealed to the city council. The appeal shall be submitted within twelve days of the date the decision is mailed. G. Council hearing and notice of appeal. If the commission decision on a type-three decision is appealed, city staff shall schedule a hearing before the city council. The council shall conduct the hearing consistent with procedures set forth in chapter seventeen point one three two. Written notice of a public hearing on the appeal shall be mailed to the applicant and those who received notice of the commission decision. This notice shall be mailed at least ten days prior to the public hearing on the appeal and shall contain the information required in section one seven point one two six point zero one. H. Notice of council decision. Within seven days of the final city council decision, the applicant and those who attended the hearing or requested notice, shall be mailed written notice of the council decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the approval or denial of the request and any applicable conditions of approval. I. Appeal of council decision. All appeals heard by the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. The appeal shall be submitted within twenty-one days of the date the decision is mailed. Appeals shall comply with LUBA procedures. One seven point one two six point zero two zero Conditions of approval. A. Authorization for conditions. Approvals of any type-three action may be granted subject to conditions. Conditions shall be designed to protect public health, safety, and general welfare from potential adverse impacts caused by a proposed land use described in an application. Conditions shall either ensure compliance with the standards of the development code, or fulfill the need for public service demands created by the proposed use. B. Timing of conditions. Whenever practical, all conditions of approval required by the city shall be completed prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. When an applicant demonstrates that it is not practical to fulfill all conditions prior to issuance of such permit, the city manager may require a performance bond or other guarantee to ensure compliance with zoning regulations or fulfillment of required conditions. Bonding shall comply with adopted city regulations and procedures. C. Modify conditions. A request to change or alter conditions of approval shall be processed as a new type-three action. One seven point one two six point zero three zero Call-up by the city manager. A. After consultation with the city attorney, the city manager may call up a decision by the planning commission on a quasi-judicial land use application for review by the city council. B. On receiving a call by the city manager, the community and economic development department shall provide to the city council the application and all other documents constituting the entire record for the quasi-judicial land use request. C. The city manager shall set a date and time for a public hearing before the city council to consider the call under the notice of public hearing per section one seven point one two six point zero one and the process listed in chapter seventeen point one three two. The decision resulting from this public hearing by the city council shall constitute the final city decision. D. A call by the city manager stays all proceedings by all parties in connection with the matter until the city council has made a decision on the application.
So this is one of the ones where it has a two-hundred-foot boundary, and right now we have three-hundred-foot, so it's up to you guys if we keep the same or go ahead and move it to the two-hundred-foot boundary. That's the only, you know, big difference between.
I don't know, I guess, I'm fine with two-hundred feet, I mean, three-hundred feet's going to include, obviously, a lot more neighbors, unless the properties, well, yeah.
If a, if a application seems like it may impact a neighborhood greater than what any other application, could, could city staff use their discretion and maybe increase the notification that have two-hundred as just general? This is what we're required to do?
We typically stick with what, what criteria says.
Yeah, usually go with what's required, on the other hand, just because it's required doesn't say that the city can't do more. Um, that's mainly a workload and budget issue when it comes to just the, the cost of getting those things out.
So currently, we're at three-hundred feet, this states two-hundred.
And type-three, so if you look back, type-three, they are site development review, conditional uses, variances, non-conforming uses, and subdivisions of planned development. That's type-three.
These are going to be fairly big.
I, I, I think I would guess lean toward the three-hundred feet, keep it the same as what we have now.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm all for making staff workload less, but on big decisions like subdivisions and variances.
Yeah.
I would support three-hundred feet.
I agree.
Okay, I will go and change that.
No, it's not.
An impact on a neighborhood would be...
I, I would guess somewhere in the neighborhood of two to five more notifications that would go out with three-hundred feet.
Depends on the neighborhoods, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on that one?
There are a couple of places where it says the city manager, and I'm wondering if that should also include a designee.
Oh, as per before, yeah.
Yeah, as before, like in, uh, um...
Couple chapters back.
One, one seven point one two six point zero two zero B. There's a city manager name there, and I think on the first page. Anyway, as before, if, I mean, it might be that only the city manager can do this sort of thing as the call-up by the city manager section, but I wasn't sure about the others.
No, I think, uh, we'll, we'll take a, I think that's one of the things that we'll review in general throughout the whole thing, is to make sure that if anywhere where we can't have a designee, they really should.
Yeah, it seems like kind of a, a running theme.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's always good to be prepared.
I think that's one of the things I did. I think I caught most of them, but...
Okay. Alrighty, shall we move on then to type-four? Alright.
Seventeen point one two eight Type IV applications and review procedures. One seven point one two eight point zero one zero Procedures for type-four actions, quasi-judicial. A. Decision authority. Zone changes and comprehensive plan map amendments initiated at the request of a property owner are quasi-judicial applications and subject to a type-four procedure and shall be reviewed and decided by the city council with the recommendation of the planning commission. B. Application and completeness. The application and completeness review process shall comply with provisions in section one seven point one two zero point zero four zero. C. Agency referrals. Referrals will be sent to interested agencies such as city departments, police, and fire departments, the school district, utility companies, and applicable state agencies. If a county road or state highway is impacted, referrals should be sent to the applicable county public works department and slash or Oregon Department of Transportation. D. Commission hearing and notice. City staff shall schedule a hearing before the planning commission. The city council and planning commission hearings can be combined if approved by the mayor. The commission shall conduct the hearing consistent with procedures set forth in chapter seventeen point one three zero. Notice of the public hearings before the planning commission and city council for a type-four land use action, shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city at least twenty days prior to each public hearing. Affected property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property shall be notified by mail at least twenty days prior to the initial planning commission hearing. Mailed notice of a pending type-four hearing shall include the following. Identify the specific land use decisions or decisions requested. Describe the street address or other easily understandable reference to the location of the site. List the relevant decision criteria by name and number of development code sections. State the place, date, and time of the planning commission hearing. Include the name and telephone number of a contact person regarding the administrative decision. State that if any person fails to address the relevant decision criteria with enough detail, they may not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals or Circuit Court on that issue. Only comments on the relevant decision criteria are considered relevant evidence. State that all evidence relied upon by the city to make this decision is in the public record, available for public review. Copies of this evidence can be obtained at a reasonable cost from the city. Application. E. Commission action. The commission action on a type-four request shall be in the form of a recommendation to the city council. Within seven days of the commission decision, the applicant and all individuals who requested notice of the decision, shall be mailed written notice of the commission decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the recommendation to approve or deny the request and any recommended conditions of approval. F. Council hearing. Subsequent to the commission hearing, city staff shall schedule a hearing before the city council. Notice shall be provided as per section one seven point one two six point zero one. The council shall conduct the hearing consistent with procedures set forth in chapter seventeen point one three two. The city council and planning commission hearings can be combined if approved by the mayor. G. Notice of council decision. Within seven days of the final city council decision, the applicant and all individuals who requested notice of the decision, shall be mailed written notice of the council decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the approval or denial of the request and any applicable conditions of approval. City council approval shall be in the form of an ordinance, a denial shall be in a form acceptable to the council. Appeals. All type-four land use decisions of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. The appeal shall be submitted within twenty-one days of the date the decision is mailed. Appeals shall comply with LUBA procedures. I. Joint notice publication. The city has the option of publishing a single notice for both the planning commission and city council hearings, provided the notice is set to publish at least twenty days prior to the planning commission hearing. One seven point one two eight point zero two zero Procedures for type-four actions, legislative. A. Procedures. Type-four legislative applications may be initiated by either a majority vote of the city council or a majority vote of the planning commission. Citizens may suggest possible amendments to either body. B. Time limit. Type-four legislative actions are not subject to the one-twenty-day time limit. C. Agency referrals. Referrals will be sent to interested agencies such as city departments, police, and fire departments, the school district, utility companies, and applicable state agencies. If a county road or state highway is impacted, referrals should be to the applicable county public works department and slash or Oregon Department of Transportation. D. Public hearings by planning commission. A public hearing shall be held by the planning commission. Notice of the time, place, and purpose of the planning commission's hearings shall be given by publication of a notice in a newspaper of general circulation in the city not less than twenty days prior to the date of hearing. E. Commission action. The commission action on a type-four legislative request shall be in the form of a recommendation to the city council. Within seven days of the commission decision, the applicant and all individuals who requested notice of the decision, shall be mailed written notice of the commission decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the recommendation to approve or deny the request and any recommended conditions of approval. F. Public hearing by city council. Following planning commission action, the city council shall hold a public hearing to consider the planning commission's recommendation on proposed amendments. Notice of the time, place, and purpose of the council hearings shall be given by publication of a notice in a newspaper of general circulation in the city not less than ten days prior to the date of hearing. G. Notice of council decision. Within seven days of the final city council decision, the applicant and all individuals who requested notice of the decision, shall be mailed written notice of the council decision. The notice shall specify findings justifying the approval or denial of the request and any applicable conditions of approval. City council approval shall be in the form of an ordinance, a denial shall be in a form acceptable to the council. H. Appeals. All type-four land use decisions by the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. The appeal shall be submitted within twenty-one days of the date the decision is mailed. Appeals shall comply with LUBA procedures. I. Joint hearing and notice of publication. The planning commission and city council hearings can be combined if approved by the mayor. The city has the option of publishing a single notice for both the planning commission and city council hearings, provided the notice is set to publish at least twenty days prior to the planning commission hearing.
So this is another one, just like the type-three, it's currently three-hundred-foot buffer, but this states two-hundred-foot buffer, so it's up to you guys whether you want to keep with the two-hundred or stay with the current three-hundred.
I think for consistency, I would recommend the three-hundred.
A couple of questions.
I agree.
It was the three-hundred, okay.
Okay.
Um, seventeen point one two six D, F, and then seventeen point one two eight point zero two zero. They keep on saying it's approved by the mayor, but the mayor is not, he's just saying a vote, uh, council, it's by majority vote. How can the mayor approve it?
So on G?
On D, it says it's approved by the mayor, but it's approved by the city council, because the mayor is only one vote.
Yeah, the, that's on...
It's just for the meetings to be combined, he can approve the meetings to be combined, not the final decision.
Yeah, he's not making the decision, obviously.
He has authority over the agendas of those meeting.
Yeah, not the final decision.
Okay.
Yeah. So also, uh, back on the first half of that, and zero one zero D, number seven, we have previous verbiage in the last section about, um, what does it read? It reads that you can, um, a, a copy of the staff report will be available for inspection at no cost, and then a copy will be provided at reasonable cost, but this one doesn't say anything about, you can review it at no cost, it just says, copies of this evidence can be retained.
It's inconsistent with the last one for some reason.
So if we could just add the verbiage from the last one, saying, hey, you can come in and look at it for free, if you want a copy, it's going to cost you a couple cents.
Okay, we will correct that. Any other questions or concerns? Okay.
Seventeen point one three zero Public hearing, planning commission. One seven point one three zero point zero one General provisions. A. Timing. Land use actions which require a public hearing by the planning commission under the provisions of this development code shall be initially heard by the planning commission within forty-five days of the receipt of an application which is deemed complete. B. Commission decisions. The planning commission shall prepare and adopt written findings for approval or denial, and any conditions of approval. All decisions shall require an order. C. Hearing action. The planning commission may continue a public hearing for addition- The planning commission may continue a public hearing for additional information, testimony, or for decision only to its next regular meeting or to a special meeting. In no instance, however, shall the decision be continued more than 30 days beyond the initial hearing date. D, continuance and open record. Unless there is a continuance, if a participant so requests before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, the record shall remain open for at least seven days after the hearing for the receipt of additional written testimony. E, type I and type II appeals. Appeal of a type I type II action shall be heard by the planning commission. Findings of the planning commission on such appeal shall be final unless further appealed to the city council. F, type III action. The decisions of the planning commission on applications for type III actions shall be final unless appealed to the city council. G, type IV actions. The recommendations of the planning commission on applications for type IV actions shall be referred to the city council for final determination. Notice of the commission recommendation is required but shall not be subject to appeal. One seven point one three zero point zero two zero planning commission hearing procedures. A, public hearing before the planning commission shall be conducted under the following procedures unless modified by the commission for a specific hearing. A, open the public hearing and announce the purpose. B, call for abstentions and objections to jurisdiction, and ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest or bias on behalf of the commission members. C, receive the staff report and recommendation. D, applicant addresses commission. E, those in favor of the application address the commission. F, those not in favor of the application address commission. G, those not necessarily in favor or opposed to address the commission. H, clarifying questions of proponents and opponents from the commission directed through the chair. I, applicant rebuttal. J, staff comments and recommendation based on the testimony. K, close of public testimony. L, deliberation of commission of findings of fact. M, decision of commission. N, close hearing. One seven point one three zero point zero three zero evidence. A, acceptance of evidence. All evidence offered and not objected to may be received unless excluded by the planning commission on its own motion. Evidence may be received subject to a later ruling as to its admissibility. B, exclusion of evidence. The planning commission may exclude irrelevant, unduly repetitious, immaterial, or cumulative evidence, but erroneous admission of evidence by the commission shall not preclude action or cause reversal on appeal unless shown to have substantially prejudiced the rights of a party. Evidence may be received in written form. See public record. All evidence shall be offered and made a part of the public record in the case. D, use of other information. The planning commission may take notice of judicially recognizable facts, and members may take notice of general, technical, or scientific facts within their specialized knowledge. Parties shall be notified at any time during the proceeding, but in any event prior to the final decision unless appealed, of the material so noticed, and they shall be afforded an opportunity to contest the facts so noticed. The planning commission members may utilize their experience, technical competence, and specialized knowledge in evaluation of the evidence presented. He writes of participants. Every party is entitled to an opportunity to present evidence, and all interested persons shall be allowed to testify. LUBA appeal. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land use board of appeals, LUBA, may be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing on the proposal before the city. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford the city council or planning commission, and the parties, an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. G, ex parte contacts. Ex parte contacts with a member of the decision-making body shall not invalidate a final decision or action of said body. The member receiving the information shall report the information for the record at the hearing. The chair shall allow rebuttal of the content at the first hearing where action will be considered or taken. One seven point one three zero point zero four zero limits on oral testimony. The planning commission chair may set consistent, reasonable time limits for oral presentations to the end that parties are encouraged to submit as much evidence as possible in writing prior to the hearing. One seven point one three zero point zero five zero exhibits. All exhibits received shall be marked so as to provide identification upon review. Such exhibits shall be retained by the city. One seven point one three zero point zero six zero record of hearing. A record of the proceeding shall be made by written, mechanical, or electronic means.
Yeah, I noticed that should be an S on that second one. We also learned that the commu, that the computer cannot read Latin.
Yeah, or type I. It's got type two down.
It's got type two figured out.
I know. Well, half the time it's like, it reads it as one seven point one three zero, and other times it's seventeen point one three.
Makes you feel a little bit better about computers someday ruling us. We all know it's coming, but at least we know they've got some time.
Yep.
I'm actually pleased to see this, to have this section in here because right now we don't have anything along these lines.
My only other thing would be in zero two zero B, do we want to add where it has, we currently have ex parte information. Do we want to have it as contacts or contacts and information?
I'm not sure, uh, that there's enough difference, but I mean, we could, we can add that, I don't.
I mean, it's consistent with what they have on the following page, so.
I think it just means any kind of ex parte, any contact.
Any contact outside of.
Contact.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
Here the hallelu, hallelujah chorus warming up.
Alright, don't let me hold you back.
Hit the pitch pipe.
Seventeen point one three two review and public hearings by city council. One seven point one three two point zero one zero general provisions. Timing. All hearings or reviews required by the city council shall be heard within 30 days of the planning commission's written decision or appeal request. In no instance, however, shall this period extend a date of the hearing and final action beyond 120 days from the date of the initial submission of a complete application, unless voluntarily agreed to by the applicant. B, council decisions. The city council shall prepare and adopt written findings for approval or denial, and any conditions of approval, within two weeks of the hearing by the city council. In no case, however, shall this decision and the preparation of written findings extend beyond 120 days from the date of initial submission of a complete application, unless voluntarily agreed to by the applicant. Amendments to adopted maps and texts shall require an ordinance, other decisions shall require an order. One seven point one three two point zero two zero city council review of appeals. A, appeals. The city council shall hear the appeals of planning commission decisions, including appeals of type II decisions rendered by staff and appealed to the commission. The city council action on such appeals shall be the final action of the city on the request. B, submission of new testimony and de novo hearings. The city council shall admit additional testimony and other evidence by holding a de novo hearing. The hearing procedures shall be the same as for a planning commission hearing found in section one seven point one three zero point zero two zero. Further, submission and review of evidence shall comply with provisions in section one seven point one three zero point zero three zero. See city council action. The city council may affirm, rescind, or amend the action of the planning commission and may grant approval subject to conditions necessary to carry out the decision. The city council may also remand the matter back to the planning commission for additional information, subject to the agreement of the applicant to extend the 120-day review period.
Alright. So on zero one zero B, uh, council decisions. Could we change, I know it doesn't make a whole lot of big difference, but all of our timeframes in this have to do with days, seven, 10, 15, 120, it says two weeks. Maybe just be consistent and stick it at 14 days. I think it's the only place I've seen it where it says.
So this, this is different in that it's written findings as opposed to notice of a decision, right?
Right, I'm just, I'm just thinking of the overall, we've always, the whole thing has been time periods, done in days.
Yeah.
It's nitpicky, it's childish.
No, I think it's, I think that's a good point. I would support it.
Just be consistent.
There's many things like, it switches back before, between section and chapter, and we decided all of it chapter, so I went through the in, whole entire thing and made sure they all said chapter, so there's a lot of little things like that in there, so.
We might as well make this consistent too.
Yeah. Yeah. If nothing else, we'll make it easier for the next guy.
Makes it very clear.
Exactly.
Anything else on this or any other section? Congratulations.
Yeah, well, you don't want me to sing.
The entire draft. Uh, we still obviously have some, uh, some work to do and to bring back the, uh, some of the corrections to you for your review. As to when that's gonna happen.
I'm done with my part. It's on you now.
It's on me.
I did everything I could do.
If I can get it in time, then we can start that at the next meeting.
When did we start this process?
Too long ago.
I don't remember. I think somewhere like June, I think is when we started doing meetings.
We actually started reviewing in earnest, I think.
Yeah.
So I guess that's a question I need to ask you guys. We don't have any, we're done with this part. Do, does the committee still want to have a second meeting of the month until, until we actually get the edits back? Because I, I have nothing, I have nothing on the agenda for the second meeting.
That was really quick.
So, I mean, everybody seems really wishy-washy about this.
I know, like, everybody's on the fence.
But I have to ask and, you know, and you guys, because until we come back with the edits, I don't see there being a reason unless I have a land use section that you need to vote on, so that's, I wanted to run that past you all.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
I'm not sure if it's the right time or when, when we're doing it, but since we're all here and it's a new part of the year, when do we take care of chair, vice chair?
Oh, that's right, we are in January, aren't we? So worried about all this stuff.
I just don't want, I don't want to miss it since we're all here.
I was gonna say, you're all here now.
Yeah, I, this would probably be the best time to take care of that, to prepare.
Let's nominate Jeff.
I'm happy doing it, I just wanna, I don't want to step on toes, so.
I second the motion for Jeff.
I thirded the motion.
All in favor, aye!
So I'm, I'm fine doing it and then.
Thank you.
Hold on, I have to write, I have to write these votes down, so hold on one second.
You gotta have an actual vote on this.
Okay, so Eva nominated, Walthius seconded. Is everyone in favor?
Commissioners are Stevens thirded.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Favor, okay, um, we need vice chair.
So vice chair currently is Henry Walthius.
I nominate Henry.
Does Henry wish to remain?
That's a good question. He says he is content if you are.
I think I've talked about.
Okay, who, who put forth the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like the status quo.
And who seconded?
Commissioner.
I seconded.
Okay.
I have to say thank you to everybody too because I really like the kind of, the vibe that we have going. I enjoy the sounding board even with our, our new additions that have joined us in the last calendar year. I, I think it's nice to have people from different walks of life and different, um, professional backgrounds that bring all kinds of new and interesting ways to look at things. So, that being said, if there is nothing else, we'll turn everybody loose at 7:35.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night. Good night.
Thank you, good night.